Minimum units, that's what your cost would be based on the 2021 budget for, you know, under this existing units. Switching to the new schedule, which isn't based on assessed value anymore and it has new units assigned for, for different benefit, this is how much a unit would cost. So you're actually going down a little bit.
So it's forty-three, twenty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
Plus twenty-two ninety-seven? Is that what he says?
Per unit, if you have both water and sewer service.
Okay, that comes to sixty-six twenty-four, and that's your water and your sewer charge.
That would be your annual facility charge.
Just the facility charge, not the water.
Not the use.
So then the water would be the previous page.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, so this is just the.
And then the one with the bottom line here for new units and sewer debt is adding the upcoming debt service charges.
So that would be another twenty-six forty-two plus the thirty-nine oh-five on the previous page, right?
Previous page, I may have went back to the previous page. That's if you're using, that's the minimum.
Minimum, right, right.
Use, so if you're, let's say you're using a minimum. I think the average that I used to calculate down here on the, the annual cost line.
Right, right. So, so if somebody's used, this is what I'm calculating here, that if an average person is using seven thousand gallons of water.
No, that's the minimum charge.
Right.
The average is what I calculated here in the annual cost.
No, no, I'm just saying, the people who are charged the seven thousand gallons of water would be paying roughly about a hundred and twenty-something dollars a month.
If that's what you're paying.
A quarter.
Yeah, I, I calculated this.
Fifty-five dollars more than they're paying now.
Yes.
A quarter.
Right. I calculated this right here, the annual cost for, for water and sewer, based on the average use, which is like fourteen thousand.
But where did it go up? Because the water came down, the water and sewer came down, right?
The water, the water and sewer did not come down by much.
No, no, but if we go to the twenty-six forty-two.
That's the minimum, yeah.
Plus thirty-nine oh-five is what?
Twenty-six forty-two plus thirty-nine oh-five is sixty-five dollars.
All right, plus forty-three twenty-seven, go to the next page.
Plus forty-three.
That's right there too, facility.
Plus twenty-two ninety-seven.
Okay, it comes out to a hundred thirty-one seventy-one.
A hundred thirty-one seventy-one times one, because that's what you get.
Right.
Right? So that's what we're paying a quarter, so that right now.
Divided by sev-, I'm sorry, what is it, one thirty-one?
Seventy-one.
Minus seventy-six twenty-five, seventy-six twenty-five divided by fifty-five fifty-one more per quarter.
Because of the facility charges.
Well, that's not even the big facility charge yet, that's this year's facility charge.
No, no, I, I, no, that facility charge is.
Well, she even said it's not going to change that much next year.
We originally went sixty-five, right?
The facility charge right now, if I'm reading it right, is twenty-four twenty-four?
It would be if you were charging on your current unit.
Right, if we're right now, but next year it's going to be a hundred and twenty-one thirty-nine.
Right.
So it's going from fifteen dollars to thirty dollars.
Right.
For a single unit, which gives roughly about a hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay, what if, yeah, so it's fifty-five per quarter because.
But that's calculating them together.
Yeah.
Which is, um, right here.
So if we did not, what is that? Can we sell that?
Can we sell seventy-six percent increase or not? No, but I mean, there's got to be.
Can we, all right, lower the facility for the water?
I understand what you're saying. The facility for the water is based on your debt service number and the number.
Those are hard numbers.
Yeah.
It's not arbitrary.
Yeah, it's math.
They're hard numbers. That's the one where you can't change.
So you did the calculation for the current minimum charge.
Right.
Both water and sewer.
What I was trying to do is, because people were asking me.
Yeah.
So I said, well, you know, I had asked the mayor when we were first talking about this, that I would like to see what a proposed bill would be.
Yeah.
For the minimum seven thousand, say fifteen thousand, twenty-five thousand, and thirty thousand, just so people can, all right, what you normally.
Get an idea.
Get an idea of what you're paying.
Right.
I normally personally pay the seven, seven thousand, I'm that one, you know, person we were talking about.
Mm-hmm.
So, and there's, you know, a lot of the seniors, they're, they're, they, you know, they are always under the seven thousand gallons anyway. So I just wanted to give a rough estimate when people ask me, well, this is what you're paying, seventy-six twenty-five, now you're going to pay ninety dollars. All right, ninety dollars is, you know, the problem is that I've been here twenty years and the seventy-six twenty-five has never changed.
Yeah.
So now we're getting hit with a seventy-six percent increase.
Instead of having a step increase.
Right.
Yeah, and you have a large debt service coming up on the sewer, which is going to be the biggest change.
Right, and that's even going to be more than the seventy-six percent.
But this right here.
No, these numbers are including the two ninety-nine, two hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
No, 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 it's, it's the new cost next year. That's, that number's, we're using the forty-two, the twenty-four seventy-four number.
When you did yours, your calculation right now. What I wanted to show you was this right here, the annual cost line on the bottom, I used the average use, which is like fifteen thousand gallons. Um, for water, so that's your, both your facility charge and your rent on, on an annual basis, and then sewer on this side. And that bottom gray line is the state average that's being paid in water and sewer.
Right, and, and I completely understand that because I, I paid for my mother's water in Rockhampton, and it's fifteen times more than they're paying here.
Right.
That, I understand we have a very good deal for water, it's like a penny a gallon, it's like ridiculous.
But the big issue is the big jump.
The jump is what's going to get people crazy.
Not understandable, mm-hmm.
So tell me again, the average is, so for a water bill it's two ninety-six and for sewer it's four ninety-five?
Um, where are you looking?
The annual cost.
Oh, yeah, annual cost.
That's the fifteen thousand gallons.
That's fifteen thousand gallons.
Yeah.
Yeah, then I'm drawing that back there.
Um, yeah, and it's just that you need to be sure you're understanding how we're getting to those numbers so that you can explain it.
Explain, right.
And it's, it is math, it, it, these are costs that you need to cover.
I think one of the selling things is the truth, which is we've been underfunding for twenty years, hasn't been funded properly.
Yeah, and these plans need.
Could you imagine your, you know, it's just like anything, it's just going to be, you know, any kind of increase, no matter what it is.
Of course.
I mean, we've seen it now in stores, we know what's going on, but now we're dealing with that and this is going to, you know, and people are just outraged about their water bill, regardless of how good the deal has been, you know, and to throw seventy-six percent, I think that's going to throw some people into a tailspin.
It's a hidden tax.
It's a hidden tax.
Yeah, what's the, um, the rate now?
About two hundred dollars a quarter.
Okay, but what's the rate per kiligallon for water and sewer right now? This is what I've come up with with the budget, what is, what's the cost now, like three-fifty?
Seventy-six fifty, seventy-six twenty-five minus fifteen.
Well, no, because she's doing the average.
No, the use, what's, what's the, what's the cost for kil-, for kiligallons?
Three-fifty.
Yeah, I do have it up here, yeah.
And the new one is three-seventy-seven.
Yeah.
That's not a.
That's not a huge increase.
Yeah.
Um, I'm going to just look up at sewer here.
That's where I'm confused.
Um, yeah, three-fifty?
The three-seventy-seven.
And five-twenty-five for sewer, so this, did the sewer go up more than the water?
Five-fifty-eight versus five-twenty-five.
Okay, so the big change is, is in the debt service, because in the past you were paying sixty dollars a year for both water and sewer debt service and your costs were not being covered.
Mm-hmm. Do you see where the seventy-six percent increase is?
No, because she just said it.
If the bill goes from seventy-six twenty-five to a hundred and thirty, thirty-one dollars, there's an increase of how much money there?
You can't calculate your debt and your use at the same time to see the change.
Well, I have to.
Oh, I know what you mean, I know, I know what you mean. Um, but if you want to find out where it came from.
Three-fifty versus three-seventy-seven.
That's the usage.
Go back to the other.
Yeah. Maybe it's concerned that somebody gets a bill and then they're going to see this big change.
Now, I think it's long for that.
And we're going to have a lot of explaining.
Okay, in nineteen ninety it was two dollars for a thousand gallons, twenty-one was, went up a dollar fifty for a thousand gallons. So what's the?
So, yeah, this, that's what we were looking at in that, and then the next chart, so you've got currently, you've got three-fifty per water and five-twenty-five for sewer, and that's based on a percentage calculation, not the budget.
Seventy-five percent.
Is that seventy-five percent?
Every ten years we go up seventy-five percent. Every twenty, every twenty years. Now, are, really our maintenance for the wastewater should be lower because it's brand-new.
Well, and then you've got different energy costs and different.
Well, the electric is crazy because every motor now works.
Right.
Uh, before, only two motors worked, now we have forty motors.
But are they new, are they more efficient, you know, that kind of?
I don't know.
Well, there's some new and some old.
Yeah.
I only go by our giraffe, I suppose.
Um, no, so I'm, I'm thinking there's, it's, the change is some here for the usage, but the big thing is going to be the debt.
So the big thing is the debt, so we figured, I think we had conversations.
Sixty-five a quarter.
Sixty-five a quarter. We were happy, we weren't happy with it because we're going to pay it, but sixty-five a quarter, now it's less than sixty-five a quarter, but it's a lot more money. The water is lower, the sewer's lower, but the debt went up, and it's coming out to.
When you add the new debt, you're going to be paying more, yeah. Yeah.
So we have to do our best not to make taxes go up in the fourth year.
Okay, so here's the final, the slide there for the final recommendations is basically here's how things are calculated for water rates, water facility charge, sewer rates and sewer facility charge, and the recommendation is to start a capital improvement fund. You might not want to start that capital improvement fund this year if you're seeing that increase, you might want to wait till the year after and have a good basis for, what kind of a fund you want to accrue over how much time and, you know, what that charge would be, because that would be added into the, the facility charge. The, the debt service and capital improvement would be covered by that facility charge, whereas your operation and maintenance are under the use rate. So those are some things to think about, um, there might be some changes in total number of units, but I don't, I don't know that it's going to go that huge if you're, if there's some particular accounts or some particular properties or parcels that you need to modify, you know?
Well, you know, we, we have three cluster homes with two clubhouses and pools. Two pools. Is that in there or?
It's different in a couple of places and there's something else that's a detail that has to be looked at. The condos are listed as, as single-family homes as condos, there's a separate account, I think, for the pool and for the different, you know, but you have a couple of these things that are set up differently. So it would be a matter of looking at how are they set up, who's, how is that pool being paid for? Is that a homeowners association?
It is.
That's paying for that cost? So that account is separate. So basically you would be charging that as if it was a pool, that, you know, whatever that meter for that account uses is what they pay for, for the use, and the debt is set up as sports and recreation, which would be four units per, per deal. And that's the problem we have with the parcels, because you don't know what's in an account until you know more about who's using what. And that's how these get assigned ultimately. Some things are really simple, single-family home, it's one, you know, two-family home, it's two. When you get to some of those mixed-use parcels, it's more difficult, and some of the parcels have more than one account. So it might be a larger parcel, there might be an account for the restaurant and the barber shop and then over, you know, whatever. So basically when you set up that account, you need to maintain your data on what's that use, what does that mean for how many units they get?
And similarly downtown, don't we have like places that have one meter but four different uses?
Correct.
So that has to change.
No, it doesn't, those are cumulative.
Okay.
So if it's one account and, and like, I'm thinking of one where that's a gas station and a car wash and a mini-mart.
Yes.
Okay, there's different numbers for each of those uses, and because that account has all of those different uses, you just add them up. So it gets difficult though, because not everybody's account is the same to cover. So I mean, that's where it gets to be, we need to sit down with someone with knowledge on this to help set up that software.
Yeah, maybe we could have them, they're basing it somewhere else, so maybe they need to take a flight out here.
They could have somebody close to them, you think? No, no. Um, either way, it's a, a conference call for sure, and, you know, sending Excel spreadsheets back and forth and making sure that, um, I would need to know what structure they need to ingest in order to give them what they need to make it easy, and then it's dealing with someone locally that can say, yeah, that's the, the number of units, and then you mentioned something else that just went on or was going on, or, oh, the other industry, we'd want to go back and make sure that they're, they have units assigned. So setting that up, there is, got to be some back and forth.
Okay, well, then the good thing is we're not including this in the fourth quarter.
In what?
Fourth quarter.
You're going, you'll have some time to set it up, yeah. Were there any other questions or concerns or details that you can think of now that, um, we can revise or, or look at?
I'm guessing, I'm going to put words in Jim's mouth, I guess he's going to want that breakdown, or you want, you want her to come that, with that example next time?
Well, I don't know, she has to do it. If we can do it, if I can figure it out, I can figure it out.
That example of five, ten, fifteen thousand to present to the residents.
Right.
Not seven.
Yeah, and then work from there, just. Right, um, I can easily set that up in, in Excel and send it to you.
And just for single family, you know, just single family.
Yeah. What was the numbers you wanted, Jim?
Seven, fifteen, twenty-five, and thirty.
Okay.
They could really use thirty thousand.
A summertime pool.
And we're okay keeping the minimum at seven?
Need to change everything at once, but it really does, I took a look at adding all of the single-family homes, what they, what their flow was, what their use was, and just letting Excel calculate the percentiles, and it's close, the twenty-fifth percentile is close to seven thousand, makes sense to keep it.
And we're going to do that.
You want to have a change based on something, that makes sense, yeah.
But really with the water and sewer, the operating maintenance, we need to, maintenance should just be supplies at this point, at least for the next couple of years.
You always, you always have something break and something that needs to be repaired?
That's true, and one of the things that I also looked at is making the wastewater plant the receiving station.
Okay.
I think I spoke to Mike on that and somebody in the firm is.
Taking a look at that?
Taking a look at that.
That would be another income.
It would be tremendous income.
Yeah, and it's probably needed.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just locally, you know, in the region.
I, I think it's a home run, uh, the, the problem is, I don't know what the cost will be to take, you know, um.
There'd have to be some modification.
Some modification, not many though, but it's, it's a bill.
Yeah.
You know, but, uh, I think we have a, a need for it, you know, like, like you said, in the area, there's a lot of people with septic.
Yeah.
In this area, rather than, if they go to Manhore's.
Yeah.
Okay, they come here.
Yep.
No, the water bills here are definitely not expensive.
Well, I'm talking about taking, you know, remember I gave you those numbers a couple of months ago, taking, making our wastewater plant the receiving station, which we really cut everything in. I think it was over a million dollars a year, uh, income.
Yeah, as long as it doesn't disrupt how your plant is operating.
Well, you know, our plant is designed now to handle what.
Handle the strength.
Yeah, we still have INI problems, but being addressed.
Very typical, yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, anything else comes up, let me know and then I'll be.
Are you available on the twenty-first? Because we're going to sit back there.
Yeah.
We're going to bring that plexiglass all the way here.
We can hear.
All right, the twenty-second then. And it has to be addressed, so it's.
Yeah, it's on, my brother's flying in from California unless everything blows up, and then if everything blows up, then we're all going to be virtual again anyway, right?
Yes. Uh, well, it is what it is.
Yeah.
Right now, and we could, hopefully I can come up with a budget between now and then, shoot it to you.
If you had a preliminary sort of a thing.
And then it would really.
Yeah, and then we can emphasize that, this is the preliminary budget for twenty-twenty-two, and based on this, it looks like the new rates would be this.
Right.
And then we put that in there instead of the twenty-twenty-one. Because I can have that as a column, right, but like, what we think will happen over the next couple of months, you know what I mean? Deducting from that so that you can project the budget.
Well, I think about the sewer, the budget to, to make this question.
You don't, won't know some of that though, in terms of electric costs and, yeah, if there's a big difference, if there's more efficiencies or if there's more equipment, you know?
Uh-huh.
But your payroll's the big, the payroll and, and utility.
It's the same, yeah.
The payroll's going to be fixed.
Yeah.
Of course, if there's a break somewhere, let's, yeah, deal with that.
Right. And that's the thought with a capital improvement fund, so you have something there, you don't have to use general fund, you don't have to, yeah.
Which is what you've been doing. All right, I have a little press come out about Jim.
I'm sorry, would you go to page five, I think it is?
Oh, on the report or on here?
You, well.
The report?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm not sure what page it is, someone says, how are the new rates being structured?
Where?
Oh, it is, that is the PowerPoint, okay. Right here?
No, the next one.
Previous one.
Page four.
Four.
Page four.
Okay, if, if three-seventy-seven times seven does not equal twenty-six forty-two.
What does it equal?
I mean, it's only a few cents off, and, and I mean, that's why I was going crazy because I'm like.
Okay, it could be what Excel rounded it to?
Not even close, it's, it's not, I mean, it's close, but not twenty-six forty-two.
What's that?
Three-seventy-seven times seven.
I see.
It's twenty-six thirty-nine, so it's, it's three cents off, okay. I was, you know, because I'm, I like, you know, I just.
Oh, no, yeah, totally.
I just want to understand it.
I'm not sure where that came from, I can double check.
Okay, and then you take one-fifty of that, and it should be thirty-nine fifty-eight, or thirty-eight, thirty-nine fifty-nine is a hundred and fifty percent, you're saying you'd use the old, the, the numbers now, right, the system now?
No, the, the use rent and the facility charge is based on the, the new, the new schedule.
The sewer amount though, the thirty-nine oh-five.
That would be the five-fifty-eight times seven.
Five-fifty-eight.
Right above it, the use rent.
So three-seventy-seven times one-point-five is five-sixty-six.
That's not relevant. We're not, there's, there's no a hundred and fifty percent, no. Basically.
I thought, I thought this is the old system, I'm sorry.
No, no, um, then that's on the next page. So basically, your water O and M divided by how much water was billed comes up to this. Your sewer O and M divided by much, how much water billed comes up to this.
I see.
So they're not related anymore.
Okay, all right, got it, okay.
Then I relate it anymore.
No, there's no relation, you have a well system for water and you have a treatment plant for your sewer.
It's thirty-six, it's thirty-nine sixty.
Does that make any difference to what you're calculating?
Now I know how you got, I couldn't figure out how you got the number, that's what I was trying to.
Okay, the last page.
Yeah.
Of the report has that summary of how the numbers are calculated, I believe. I might have to find the last, the different pages on the folder. Nope, that's on the slide. Um, implementation in the report, the basic calculations are in the middle of the page for rates, second paragraph, um, page twelve, and then on this one, on the PowerPoint, it's the last page. So which, I don't know which one you're looking at.
I would have been.
Okay, but it is on the last page of this, is the, I can't find your last page there.
Page six.
Yeah, it's got the basic summary explanation of how things are calculated, and in the report itself, it's on page twelve in section three, which is implementation, how you're going to actually put this thing together. Um, and it's, it's, um, not that complicated, um, problem is you have to have the data in order to do it. How much is your budget and how much water was billed the previous year? Total.
So you, you know, we said bills would be going up two-hundred a year.
It's sixty-five, one-thirty, two-sixty versus sixty, two-hundred a year, yeah.
Two-hundred.
Just a facility.
Yeah.
We weren't talking about the rates at that time. So the water was going to be the same, sewer was going to be the same, but the facilities were going to go up two-hundred a year.
Right.
Yeah, that's that big per-unit cost right here. So currently you're paying sixty a year totally.
Right.
Water's going to go to forty-three and sewer's going to jump next year.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that's the, that's the big addition.
So do you figure in one-fifty-five a quarter for seven thousand?
When you're paying for it?
Maybe fifty-five dollars a quarter.
It was a hundred thirty, it was thirty, it was a hundred thirty-one dollars.
Hundred thirty-one times four.
That's what, unless I figured it wrong.
Right now it's seventy-six twenty-five per year. Would you like?
Three oh five.
Three oh five?
Yeah.
So five-seventy-four minus three oh five?
Yeah. Two sixty-nine?
The year?
Um, what was the original number? Three oh five? Eighty percent?
So it's two sixty-nine a year.
Seventy-six twenty-five times four is three oh five. And then what did it add in?
One thirty-one.
Yeah, I did it right, it was five twenty-four.
Five twenty-four?
Yeah.
So five twenty-four minus three oh five?
Yeah, it's two nineteen.
So the change is two nineteen?
Change is two nineteen.
Okay.
A year.
Divided by.
Three oh five, the original number.
What's that worth?
I'm doing the percentage for the year, seventy-one percent for the year. Seventy-one percent, seventy-two percent.
It sounds worse like that, but it's really not that bad, you know, in my opinion.
It's the school taxes go up seventy-two percent.
You'll just say in the form of dollars. Okay, um, Jim, do you have a email or something?
Yeah, the school, it's right here in work.
I'm hoping.
K O L A R, wherever Washington is. K O L A R, thank you.
I'm excited.
All right, so, so it's two nineteen divided by twelve.
Yeah, you could do it like that.
Divided by 4, 50,000 dollars more.
Well, you're saying you could do it by the month.
Well, you gotta pay, you know.
So it's, it's $5 less than what, what we originally kept.
If you do it.
It is what it is, I, I.
Well, yeah, you have to figure a way to, yeah.
It is what it is, and I gotta pay, you gotta pay.
I'm gonna have to pay water.
You gotta pay it, you don't pay.
We had another client that was gonna go to the public and say, because he had several different districts that were consolidated into one, and it turned out that this district wasn't paying debt at all, really, and the other three districts were. So their cost was gonna go up a lot, and he was all ready to say, you're welcome, because you've been underpaying for so long.
Is there a calculation of property values going up because of infrastructure being improved?
If you have a reliable infrastructure, um, everybody benefits. There are.
Protection values.
Yeah, there are situations. Yeah, there are situations where you've got issues, so many issues with your sewer collection system for INI, you're not allowed to hook anyone else up, you know, and, or if your water's not of good quality, or the pressure's too low, or, no one really wants to buy into that, you know? So it does. All right, if, was there?
No, thank you.
Need to belabor, yeah, um, you know how to get me, you got any questions, and I'll send this over, um, with Jim's request.
Okay, I appreciate it, Chrissy, thank you so much.
And then if there's any, um, thoughts, this would be the basic thing for the public hearing, what we were saying, if you get a preliminary budget, you can add.
I, I will get that to you.
The actual preliminary budget into the, the PowerPoint.
When are you leaving for your presentation?
Um, not until after my brother shows up from California, so if this is gonna be the 21st, sometime before that, get me the.
All right. It sounds good?
Great, thank you so much.
Sorry, I'm just trying to understand.
Oh, I know, no, it makes sense, and if that's what you need to talk to people about it, it's easy enough to get it for you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, um, so we need to set a public hearing for the 21st at 7:15. Somebody want to give the motion?
Nope.
Second motion.
Thanks.
So a motion was made by Deputy Mayor Rodado, seconded by Trustee Cora, roll call, Trustee Colar.
Yes.
Trustee Colar.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodado. So a public hearing for water sewer facility rates that will start in the first, um, billing of our new fiscal year 2022-2023, it'll be 7:15. Resolution, anybody in here? A resolution on Chief Zaccaro's four-year contract. Uh, this was sent out through Redline, I'm into, we'll see what that'll.
You don't have a copy, right?
Yeah. Right, well. We met several times with the Chief Zaccaro. I don't think he's asking for anything crazy.
He is a little crazy.
When, just his contract, yeah. Um, I'm fine.
I don't have any issues.
I mean, it's perfect. So I need a motion?
Second.
Do adopted as presented.
Do adopted as presented, today is December 6, 2. Trustee Colar.
Yes.
Trustee Colar.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rodado.
I'm thinking, sure, he didn't bring me my coat.
It's warmer than we're needing today.
Chief, thank you, really, for everything that you've done to, with the apartment, such